Okay, good evening, everyone. Excited to kick off the planning commission meeting, May 2nd, 7:00 P. M. Um, and we are so on tonight's agenda, we have some time for public comment reviewing minutes. Uh, most of our time will be spent this evening on the town plan project, some planning for that. And um, some other business. I do have one change to the agenda which was published. So the agenda has us working on the question of the month for two questions that we have in the queue. Infrastructure and also local economy. And based on the time that we have, we are not going to work on the local economy question because that question won't arise until mid-June. So we're going to focus instead only on the infrastructure question for tonight. Uh, does anybody have any other changes they'd like to suggest for the agenda? Okay, so then item number three is public comment. Do we have any members of the public who wish to make a con- share a comment with the planning commission?
Oh, how's your?
There's nobody in Zoom land here except for the.
Hopefully, everybody's saving up their energy and enthusiasm and town planning activities for tomorrow night, the community forum.
I did like the note on front porch forum that Randy's heart went.
Yes, yep.
Very good.
Yep. So I uh, sent a message to them, uh, asking them to advertise on their sign. And also inviting them to the forum. Yep. So he had written back and and said that he was going to make that post for us. That was great. Yeah. Okay, so then we'll move on to item number four. We uh, hear a motion to approve the minutes for April 4th and April 18th. Does anybody object to us just doing them together?
I cannot vote on April 18th because I was not here.
Okay, so we'll keep them separate. A motion to approve minutes for April 4th.
So move.
Sarah, thank you. Second?
Second.
Eric, okay, any corrections or edits to the minutes of April 4th? Hey, all those in favor of approving the minutes for April 4th?
Say aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, the minutes favor fourth are approved. Motion to approve the minutes for April 18th.
Move.
Sarah, getting a rhythm here. And then do we have a second?
Second.
Chris, any comments or edits or corrections on the minutes for April 18th? Okay, we'll vote to approve to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And okay, so we have ayes and Eric abstaining.
And I abstained violently from April 4th.
Oh, Chris abstained from April 4th. Okay. Nancy, did you get that? You got that? Um, okay, so item number five is the town plan 2024 project. We have a few items to go through this evening. And actually, uh, my goal is that we end a little bit early tonight because we are all going to be together and again tomorrow. So thank you very much for making extra time for the project this week. Um, the first thing I want to do is just make sure that our, we have our ducks in a row for tomorrow.
And is this the document that we should be looking at?
Yes, so that's the document. So.
Can you share it? Hang on just a second so I can share it with Sabina and folks. Are you able to see that, Sabina?
Okay, okay. So um, I think we're going to have a fantastic turnout. I have received emails from people. I think we've made it really visible. I think that the front porch forum questions, while maybe appear controversial, have actually helped to attract attention to the event. I think the timing's pretty good. Hopefully, the weather will be pretty good. Um, so I think that we should be prepared for a pretty substantial turnout. Uh, David White and Steve Whitman are the primary organizers for the meeting. And um, Linda and I have been peppering them with a lot of questions like what do you need us to do and how should we set up? The basic strategy is that they have given a room layout to the um, high school staff, who will set up the library at the high school, the way that he described in our meeting on April 18th, which was that we're going to have like um, audience style seating for the opening presentation, which they think will just be about 10 or 15 minutes to introduce people to the idea of the town plan and introduce people to the evening's activities. And then they're going to be setting up stations around the perimeter of the room. And I think there's somewhere between five and eight stations, and each station will have visual aids and activities. And we have seen the visual aids and we haven't seen the activities. But our understanding is that the activities is a variety of things of like putting on stickers and answering questions and talking with your neighbors. So um, and they seem to uh, or they are recommending a very fluid and self-guided format. So they don't really want planning commission members to intervene too much. They said we should not be dedicated to any particular station. And um, our main goal is to really just be eyes and ears and try to remember as much as possible of what we hear. Encourage people to write down what they think or what they say. And if if need be, to take notes ourselves to try to remember everything that we're learning. Um, so that's the basic format. So any questions about that?
Are we expected to provide instructions at any point along the way? Or answer questions they might have in front of various stations for the our many hundreds of attendees who will no doubt be there?
Right, um, not really. Uh, we're not expected to provide instructions. Although I think if you observe someone having a little trouble or misinterpreting, it's fine to interject. Um, and then in terms of answering questions, yes, especially if people have questions about planning or what we've been doing so far, or setting the context to adjust to help them complete the activity would be how we would help answer questions. So it'll be all of us. Um, and plus I invited assistance from Frederica Keating from the Affordable Housing Committee, S.J. from Affordable Housing, John Abbott and Phil Newbeck, who was the prior chair of the Planning Commission, who've all agreed. I'm still waiting to hear back from just a couple of other people because I'm concerned how with this very fluid format, we're actually going to be able to hear everything and record and learn and listen if the primary um, communication tool is a lot of talking. If the primary communication tool is a lot of writing, then I'm less worried. But I think we're um, that's I'm not, that's not actually correct. I think if the primary tool is writing, that's how it's designed. I still think a lot of learning can happen by listening. And so how do we make sure that we listen, 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 remember, 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 and then come back and debrief and share? And distill that into like actionable stuff? So that's the format. Any other questions about the format? Okay, then I think one of the most important deliverables that this group should make sure that we do is that we create a really welcoming environment that people feel like we're ready, that we're happy that they're there, that they know this, not that that they think this, that we express gratitude and that we really help facilitate movement and conversation. Because Chris, you asked a great question in the meeting that we had with them, which was there's eight stations, there's two hours, half of it is going to be taken up by food and chatting. Like, how are we going to get people to move along? I asked them, should I ask the consultants, should we have like a time check? Like, hey, it's 7:45. If you've only gotten to three stations, good time to move around. They said no. They said we'll play that by ear. If we think we need to do that, then we can do that. But I think that that would be a good thing to keep in mind if you see people spending a really long time at one table, encouraging them like, hey, especially if there's like a log jam or potentially disagreement. Um, so in order to make it.
Is it two hours, 6:30?
6:30 to 8:30. So 15 minutes intro, then basically, you know, an hour and a half of activities and milling. So I would like to be ready to go by six. I think people, especially people who want to be on time for a meeting, are going to show up by 6:20. And they're going to want a seat and they're going to want to see what is happening. So I would prefer not to be moving tables and posters around. So I'd like to be ready. Like to have somebody in the hallway greeting people, hi, go to the library. Okay, Sarah can do that. So that's a job on there to the front hall greeter and direct people to the library and to stay there until stay there until probably at least like 6:45, because I know people will be hurrying in. And some people don't like to come to the first boring parts of meetings. Um, and then I, I, David and Steve and someone from Steve's team, Liz, will be there setting up. They're probably arriving at 5:30. The school staff will probably be doing about 70 to 80% of the setup. So it's not really so much setup as much as like just being there and being ready. Um, I think that so it would be great if three or to four people, maybe that's too many. I don't know, three to four people could say that they would be there for setup. David and Steve are responsible for AV. Sabina and her son Alex have got. Sabina, did you get the camera from MMC TV? Got the camera from MMC TV, who's generously loaned us the camera so we can record the event. Um, and then we need, I think, at least three people at the welcome table, where we're going to have a sign in sheet to try to record everybody who's coming. And I think everyone will come at the same 10 minutes. So that needs to be robustly staffed with and maybe mobile, like do we, if they, if we're trying to get people to sign in, I don't want people standing on a line. I want somehow to be, I don't know, clipboards and stuff like that. Go and get people to sign up.
Can we also have a clipboard that, you know, we pass through the seated audience just to catch anybody who snuck in without signing in?
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
So I'll have to see how many clipboards I can.
And maybe they'll, I don't know what they're planning to have at the welcome table. Um.
One other thing, Susan, that I wanted to, going back to your introduction where you're talking about the role of the planning commission, I wanted to reiterate David's request for the the staff, the planning commission members to be on the lookout for members of the public who may be um, commanding or having a commanding presence at any one particular table or capturing the attention of a group of people for a prolonged period of time to try to just run interference and kind of break the, you know, let them engage, but also just making sure that the the flow is happening and that people aren't getting um, stuck in one location for any prolonged period of time.
We have tags or lanyards or anything.
Yes, so everyone who's considered staff, so including our our extra volunteers, will have name tags on a lanyard, but it's not, we just have to fill out our, we have to write them ourselves, but they're going to be on a lanyard. Everyone else, members of the public, will all be asked to write up their own name tag so that in the discussion groups, they can talk to each other better. So I do think that the welcome is really important because people will make a first impression. They're going to say, this is really organized or this is a yeah, blank show. And um, I, I think like David and Steve have great information. I'm assuming they have great activities. So I, I would like to do everything we can to get it off on the right foot. Does anybody have any suggestions of other things that we could or should do to make it smoother, more fun, more welcoming, more friendly, more inclusive, more efficient?
Following on what you were just mentioning about some of the airtime dominators?
I'm sorry, Eric, can you pull the mic closer to?
Following up on some of those comments about the airtime dominators, perhaps we should have a 10-minute timer that every 10 minutes goes ding. And we can go say, please, if you're ready, please move. If you're not, stay put. But it's been 10 minutes.
We actually asked them that exact thing. We're like, wouldn't you want everybody to move every 10 minutes? And they said, no, that in their experience, they found that by letting people gravitate towards the things that they're really interested in and not interfering so much. So I'm with you. The whole loosey-goosey format of it is really not aligned with how I like to do things.
That need. Okay, it's still loosey-goosey. But we're just giving a bell every 10 minutes just to let people know it's been 10 minutes. Stay where you are. It doesn't mean anything other than it's been 10 minutes. For us, that becomes a reminder. That group over there hasn't moved in the last 10 minutes. One of us should perhaps, as you suggested, intervene. But we're not telling everybody they have to move. We're saying that bell means it's been 10 minutes.
Right.
Would they be okay with that?
The downside to that is that you might interrupt a really positive constructive conversation.
I think we're wise enough that if that was going on, we would know that. I hope we are.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I will definitely let them know that this is our feedback. And maybe a a middle ground of that would be if we're assuming that we start at uh, 6:45, that we all have our own internal clock, you know, every 15 minutes on the quarter hour, really sort of checking in and saying like, okay, based on this group, is it fabulous and I should let them go? Or would this be a good time? And so it's a little bit organic without a bell, but we're all cognizant that's the goal? Does that seem like it would be workable?
Next week, I'm going to Salt Lake City where I'm going to be running a two and a half day workshop on scenario planning for a drug company. I do a lot of these.
Right.
And if you just let people talk on one subject, it's really hard to get them off. Sometimes it's important to go in there and say, yeah, this is overdone. We've cooked this goose. We need to pull it out of the oven.
Yeah, I also, I also worry.
I really don't like it when I see people.
Yes.
Focused like that.
Well, I also worry that specific people will fixate and find an audience and monopolize that audience at that station for a solid 30 minutes. And then those people either won't experience that station or topic or what have you.
Or may feel embarrassed leaving.
Right. Okay, I will.
But but I also think we know how to recognize that. And maybe we should be on the lookout for that.
And I think we have a decent idea of who those people might be.
Yeah.
So I think we could base a lot of this on that.
Yeah.
But at the same time, again, if it's a really great conversation, I understand the importance of it. We run the risk that if we allow any one group to spend too long in one place.
Yeah.
One, too many ones in that sentence, but I'll get over that. That group doesn't get to experience the other side. There isn't, we don't get their insights. Equally important, other groups that might want to come there, don't get to go in there and get, we don't get their insights.
Right, because that station's full and they can't break in and it's, okay, I'll, I will deliver this back to them and um, see if we can't come up with some sort of solution. If I can't push them to come up with some sort of solution. Uh, okay, other, other thoughts about making it more successful, effective?
Are we going to give uh, the attendees something to write on so they can write their impressions after each session or some way? Yeah, I, I wasn't here, so I don't know what their.
We, we don't know either, but they said that each station, yes, will have um, an activity. And it sounded like most of those activities were, was collecting written information and feedback. So I'm assuming, and they're coming with all the materials like markers and forms and questionnaires and maps and stickers and all kinds of stuff like that. So yes, but that's, I think, why I think we have to be the eyes and ears. Either, you know, writing notes as we hear stuff or really just listening and trying to record as much as possible in your own mind so that we can learn from what we hear, if it's not, if they're not able to write it down.
I wonder if it would be um, we could create some efficiency by having um, welcome tables in two different locations or separated so that we don't congest everyone in one area. I know you were talking about maybe like having clipboards that we were bringing to the people, but even maybe having like two separate check-in welcome tables so that people could go to one or the other. And still, maybe even if there is a cluster of people, having staff like circulate with a clipboard to sign in, but just really trying to make sure people are constantly moving and not standing in the hallway.
Yes, and actually it makes me think because of the way the AV is set up in that room, the way the projector goes this way, the front door is right here. So anybody coming in late is actually coming into the front of the room where the presentation is. So maybe the welcome table's definitely more than one. That's a great idea. Should be outside in the hallway, not in the library.
Because I know when that town meeting, when we did the voting, it got congested entering the library there at certain points.
Yeah, that's a good idea. All right, so well.
Could we perhaps then use, using the voting uh, analogy, right? Once you cast your, you write your, you enter in through the main entrance of the library.
Hmm.
You went into that back room where the the booths were.
Right.
And left out of a separate door.
Right.
We could reverse that flow so that no one's going in front of that presentation. So coming through that back door.
We do have access to that room.
The key.
They call it the Huntington Room now, I guess.
Oh, okay.
New name, Huntington Room.
Yeah.
Um, that's not a bad idea so that people don't have to enter if they're a little bit late right into the presentation.
Yep, yeah, let's do that. Okay, I do too. That's a good idea.
Or is also closer to the entrance door rather than having to go through the hallway to get into the library. You can kind of come in and go.
So Sarah can just go like this.
Oh, we could set up like a little blue cordon.
Yep.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good, 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 good. Okay, what else? Other ideas, suggestions?
What are the snacks?
Linda, snack extraordinaire.
Yeah.
Has obtained snacks for 100 people.
Yes, up to 100 people. And.
How many did we have at?
I ordered them a couple of weeks ago, so now I'm trying to remember.
As long as they're not sticky.
Have it the commercial.
No, they're not sticky. It's like um, veggies and, you know, veggies and dip and um, cheese and crackers and
cookies.
Fruit. There are cookies. Yeah, some of it might be a little sticky. There are cookies. There's definitely cookies. Dip is sticky.
Right.
So there may be a little bit of sticky items.
Okay.
It's that kind of like snack stuff.
And should this, maybe the stack should be at like two different spots?
That's probably a good idea too to have.
Because that's like good conversation.
If we can get them on.
See, we could be party planners, people.
If we could have them on opposite sides too, I think that would be good.
Yeah.
Kind of kind of spread out like where the people are.
So how many people did we have at that commercial district forum?
It's not 130.
Yeah, I think, I think it was well over 100. Yep.
Maybe I think it's very well attended.
Right.
This is even more important.
That was, that was well attended, but it was on the same day as a vote. So it had a lot of visibility and a lot of controversy. It was a vote, no, it was a vote on a zone. There was a, the select board adopted zoning amendments. There was a citizen petition to um, dispose of them. And so you had to vote on the petition. And there, we, there were a thousand, about a thousand people voted that day. About 130 people came to that meeting. So the way I'm looking at it is this, if it's a much lower turnout, I'm going to assume that people trust us. They think we're doing a good job. They were too busy. They couldn't come. They'll do the thing online. If we get a great turnout and it's way more people than we can handle, then we're just going to have to figure it out on the fly. Which I think the room is big. We have extra people. I think it'll be great.
And we um, logistics again. We talked about having clipboards for people to sign in on. And we also have whoever's got that clipboard, get a roll of name tags. So we can do that both.
Yeah, we're gonna have name tags?
Yes. Yes, I had all order name tags a few weeks ago. And I need to confirm that they are here. And if they're not, I will buy some tomorrow.
I think they have them at the dollar store.
I'm sure they do, probably. Yeah.
Um, and do you, are they doing a sign in sheet or are we supposed to provide a sign in sheet?
Um, that was unclear to me. Um, but I will come prepared with them.
Okay.
So that if they don't have them, then we will, we will have them.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
One thing that I was wondering about, if I may.
Yes.
Um, did, was there any desire for certain printed materials that I can print tomorrow to have as either a take home or something tangible for people to be having to look at? Or is that not a need?
I think that's. Can I jump in there? Um, I talked with Steve and David today and they wanted us to reassure people um, that the materials are all posted online. So they don't actually have to spend their time, you know, like taking pictures with their phone so they have it for later and and worrying about that stuff, that everything that's relevant um, will be posted in one form or another online. And so that will be where it's housed on our town plan page. So there really isn't any need to supply additional stuff?
The only thing I thought of was a little mini of our poster that shows the rest of the meetings. And that has a QR code on it and it has the Join in Jericho website. And that could be like a, what do you call that? A lever of of the league? What's that called? When you, you know, it's the thing you give to somebody when they're leaving?
Take home.
Yeah, no, it has a name, it has a name. Um, I don't know, Linda, could you print that? You know, two on a sheet and slice them up. And I don't, I don't know if that many people would take it, but maybe some people would take it.
Having the QR code that takes you to that specific.
I was, yeah.
Place in the website, I think is important.
I do too. I would agree. I was going to say it. I think at a minimum, we should have a take home available for people with a QR code to where all of these materials will be online.
Instructions and how to use the QR.
So then maybe, maybe um, a bunch of displays of, we have extra posters right up there, don't we? At the, in the front of the hallway here that have the QR code on them?
Uh, I didn't see them there, so I'm.
Oh, maybe they're.
I think people took them and built them up. That said, I can very easily print some more.
Yeah.
Do we have, do we need uh, a map of Jericho and the current zoning? And then an explanation of what is currently here for people who probably don't know what zone they're in or what's allowed there?
Though they have all kinds of maps that they've heard, that David White has made different maps for different stations for different activities. And there's like, I don't know if there's a zoning map, but there's infrastructure, um, natural resources, community facilities, like each map kind of corresponds to that activity.
Is it something that?
And those are also on the website or.
Another whole website. I'm trying to be as inclusive to people who may not be incredibly web savvy. Might be nice to have a paper copy for some of those people who don't know how to use, don't know how to use QR code or have it invested in.
Or the personal map viewer or.
Or any of those things.
So a map of the town or a zoning districts map or what?
Zoning districts would be helpful for many people who probably don't know what district they're in and what's allowed in it.
Right.
But we could see, we could check with David. He's going to leave tomorrow. Let's see if he's got one coming.
Yeah, actually Sabina, you saw.
Yeah, I was going to say, uh, Linda, if you go to the web, um, are we done looking at this thing?
Um.
No.
Sheet? Or do we need to go look at it more? Because we can go to the website and.
Names in all those boxes.
Okay, well, you want to finish that first?
Yeah.
Okay, while you, while you finish that, I'll pull up the website. Okay.
I'll let Sabina do that. All right, let me go back to screen share. Oops.
Okay, so Sarah, you said you'd be the front hall greeter.
Yes, and I can also stay and clean up.
I can be at the welcoming table.
Okay.
I will be happy to provide a welcome table support for Chris. I will be happy to provide a welcome table support for Chris.
Well.
Uh, no, that's setup.
Oh, well, this one says welcome table too.
Well, that's just setting up the welcome table. I'm a little.
I'll be happy to help Chris set up the welcome table and to staff the welcome table. So you can quit.
So you can do setup?
The welcome table setup.
Yep.
And then operate the welcome table.
Okay.
Gotcha. Okay, so this, you're gonna be here.
I can do setup.
I don't know if I'm gonna make it from five to nine without food.
Um, that's true, right? Well.
That's my concern. There is food there.
I can't make it two hours without food.
Yeah.
Questions, friends.
I'm picking up the food at five, so I'm expecting the food will be there by five thirty. If you, if you need a little nibble.
I don't know, maybe.
I'll, I'll like get there at six and I'll probably be standing there eating until people walk in the door.
Maybe we get a pizza at eight thirty when we're done.
I can manage. I'll find it.
Peanut butter sandwich in a backpack. Eat before you come.
I was thinking that if there's more than, more people than Linda has food for, we could just have Mountain High deliver a couple of pizzas.
Oh. Um. I can also be at the welcome table.
Should we sign, um, IDA for anything?
Uh, well.
We know.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, we can send it to.
I think everyone will probably just stay and help clean up and that'll go pretty fast. Not worried about it. I just wanted to make people aware that the big thing about cleanup a lot of times is getting rid of the food. So we should encourage people to take home the leftovers. Attendees to take home leftovers like as it's as it, as it looks like it's wrapping up. And I didn't want Linda to get stuck loading a bunch of stuff in her car at nine o'clock at night and bringing it back here, cause that sucks.
I won't bring it back here. I'll just bring it home.
Okay, well, whatever, but we're not gonna abandon you to that crummy job.
Do we need take home packs for people? Little brown paper bags.
I am so optimistic that there's not gonna be enough.
I know, I'm more worried that we're not gonna have enough food than having.
Okay, that's a good problem. That would be.
One thing nobody wants.
That'd be a good problem to have. So, okay, I think we probably got, got through this enough. Okay, so.
You love celery sticks? I feel like they're always leftover.
Well, we're, we're good to go. Okay, so now Sabina, back to you with maps.
Okay, um, so if Linda stops sharing, then I will start.
Okay.
Oh, one last thing. We're gonna huddle with Steve and David at six fifteen when it's go time, just to make sure we're all in the same
I don't, I don't understand that.
I don't think that's a good idea if everybody's gonna be.
I think you're gonna, the light people, we won't be able to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
She wanna do it at four forty-five.
Right, yeah, no.
Yeah, five forty-five might work.
Not four forty.
But we're supposed to be there at five.
It'd be a quiet huddle at four forty-five.
Take that long, no.
No.
I agree that the huddle would be valuable. I just think people are gonna start showing up at like five after six and.
That's what I think, well, especially people who are so excited to come.
And, and to, to further on what you're saying, Sarah, I it would be a chance for us to hear from Dave and crew, what exactly they plan to do and how they see this working.
Or what they want us, what they want us to do. Yeah, okay.
What about traffic control?
Outside?
Yeah. Cars.
Hey, I think we'll be okay.
Take it easy.
You're making fun of me.
He is. I am enjoying it.
All right, you just need the house cleaning list I give to my kids. They hate me. Okay.
Lena.
Um, alright, so on the right in that, in the folder that says community forum posters and maps, town plan twenty-four.
Um. You have that.
Yeah, I can.
You see what she's talking about?
Yeah, kind of.
Hold on, sorry, can't tell, um.
Can you scroll up Sabina, so I can see what, what navigated you to that document?
Uh, this is the town plan. Um, twenty-four page. Which you can get to from our planning commission page. That's the easiest way to get there. You'll, you'll see like this join in, um, logo is on our, in the middle of our planning commission page and it's a hot link. So you can just click on it and it'll take you to this page.
Wow.
So let me zoom in. Is that size pretty good now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So then if you scroll down, there's a folder in the documents section. Th- this is all the resources that, um, Steve and Liz sent to me today. So, um, they're gonna be using this stuff in these folders for their, um, post-production um, online version of this. But this is, I'm just showing it to you now, so you can see what is included. So if you go down to the bottom, there are maps. So there's Upland Natural Community Map, Topography Map, Transportation Map, Riverside, Jericho Corners, Jericho Center, Habitat, Ag, Land Use, and then Conserved Land. So those are the maps that David had made up. I mean, they're, they're maps you've seen before. And if you want me to click on any of them, I can. Um, and then all of the posters are at the top.
And these are posters that will be used at the forum tomorrow?
Yes, these are, these are what the people, so this is basically recreating an online version of what the people in the room will be doing. So we can go, we go, so there's gonna be a table. And people will see this poster at the table. And then again, we don't know what the questions are and what, what other activities go along with this poster, but there will be some. And so what they're doing is creating the same questions and the same, um, getting the same feedback in an online thing that they're gonna send me a link to at the end of the week. And they're gonna link it to these posters that are here on the website. I'm just, you can go look at these tonight if you want to, or tomorrow. It's all the same.
There is no zoning map then.
Yeah, I didn't see one.
Well, but, but like the, um,
Linda, if you could hit the one single bar.
Mm-hmm.
Right there.
Yep.
So there's this. This is the one for Jericho Corners. Is this what you were thinking about Eric? Like this kind of information?
Yes.
Okay, so there's one, one of these for each of the village.
But for the whole town.
Well, there was one map called Land Use, and I think that shows like commercial and residential, but that one I think has the whole town.
Well, this is the land use map.
Yep.
There you go.
It's not exactly zoning districts, but it's close-ish.
I mean, do we know that there's gonna be questions that ask somebody what their zoning district is?
There will be a lot of discussion in the affordable housing area that will relate directly to zoning and densities and districts. So I think it would be.
About this. Is this allowed at my house?
I think it would be important to have a zoning map.
I agree.
Yep.
We don't need to go to each of that station.
Hmm, you wanna tell David that?
I think I can bring one.
I feel like we have one up there.
Yeah, I think we already have one.
Yeah, I've seen it in other places.
And people are also gonna wanna say, not just what, what you mentioned, Sarah, which I, I completely agree, but I say, what, what is my district? But also the other question is, how close will this be to my house?
Yes.
This is gonna be in my backyard.
Yes.
Okay, so Linda's gonna bring a zoning district map. And so if those questions come up, we have the reference there physically.
I'll bring the biggest one I can find.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And ye- yes, they are online.
Right.
But if you're there at the session and, I don't have my phone.
Right.
Let's make it easy.
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next topic within the same, the same discussion town plan project. And the next topic is to review the outline for the plan. So David White drafted a plan outline, just kind of an early receptacle for how he's thinking about organizing things. And I thought it would be helpful for him to get some reactions from us and then potentially some more thoughtful feedback. So since we have a limited amount of time this evening, I just want to show this to people and, and, and this was sent yesterday ahead of the meeting. This is what he's thinking. Wendy and I already provided David some written comments about his terminology and how he's organized it. And he would like all of the planning commission members to, um, think about what he's put forward for an outline and give him some feedback. So what I'm gonna do right now is just walk us through it quickly. And then we'll have a brief discussion about it. Okay, so at the top of the screen, he's, has mentioned this before. He wants to organize the plan into volume one and volume two. Volume one is the plan, what we're gonna do and why we're going to do it. And volume two is what he calls the context, which is all the other stuff, all the data, all the background. Some of the, um, external sources like the regional planning commission and so forth. So what I've listed here is just at a very high level, the outline of volume one. So volume one is organized into an introduction, a discussion of community values, and then a discussion of themes. And within each theme is, um, where the actions and strategies are, like what we're gonna do and how we're gonna accomplish things. Um, I think he's similarly committed to a short plan, an actionable plan, and an accessible plan. So the first thing he's listed here is five. He's suggesting these are the community values of Jericho that we should be organizing the plan around. That the community is welcoming, authentic, resilient, healthy, and strategic. Um, Wendy had a slightly different take on this. She, um, gave him some suggestions around the language. And I wanted this group to just have some general reaction. Are, you know, do you, do these sync up for you as what you think are the primary community values? I kind of expected the forum tomorrow night to road test this a little bit to try to solicit input from the community about the values, but, um, uh, maybe he'll be able to extract that from the different activities. I'm not really quite sure. So I've listed down below, are there values that are kind of missing? Like Wendy had suggested something around schools because they're so critical in our community, teachers and staff, and learning ecosystems and climate change and responsive and more capable governance, which we've talked about here before about the size of the select board and how, and that we, and Chuck talked about it last time he was here, that if we're gonna do all these things, the town needs more resources. How should that be set forth? So just in general, litmus test. Do you love this list? Do you hate this list?
I mean, how much of it is, is true versus aspirational? To say our, our values are diversity, I think is aspirational and not factual. And to say, and I'm not.
Eric, can I rephrase that?
Yes.
Our values are diversity. Our reality is not.
Yes.
I think this is, I think he's saying this is what drives us. These, these are goals and aspirations. This is what's important. Now we have to figure out, is there a gap? How do we close the gap?
Yeah.
I wonder how much of the communities would really be strategic.
I totally.
That seems like an outlier to me. I think that's our
Again, I feel like.
In this room, that's our our mission, but I don't know that it's a community value.
I agree with you. I thought that was a little bit all like odd duck in that list. Like is, 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 is the str- is strategy of value?
No.
Right. And I would think that education could fall under healthy. Likely, I would think, um.
I just have a hard time that number four, the, the words are nouns and not adjectives, but that's where my brain got stuck in the bed. Clearly, I'm just wired.
And I do think that
Language arts.
Uh, maybe the, s- something about the natural resources could be considered a community value.
I, I completely agree with you on that. The community and everything we've sent out to them talks about the natural environment that we are in, the access to recreation facilities, the views, all of those. And I don't see where that fits in on these five.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we had community values and what do you like most about Jericho also came into issues, again, natural but locational.
Right.
We're in a place that gives us access to so many things. And again, I don't see that up here.
Okay.
I also don't see up there I think maybe welcoming counts as a sense of community, a sense of belonging.
I think there are a lot of powerful words. I just think they could be, live anywhere. And I agree there. There's a lot of things we've heard that are not represented there.
Susan, do you know what is being referenced under the authentic value? Like what of the topics that we have been discussing would be like under the authentic? Are you saying these are all values as part of every topic?
Yeah, he, he has this idea that as each element, like we're gonna do X, Y, or Z, that that element must make progress on at least some, if not all of the values. And so he, I think, has a structure in mind where they're gonna be tied together.
But that would make me question authentic then.
Yeah, I questioned authentic also.
Are we gonna do a genuine infrastructure or are we?
Yeah, I'm trying to wrap my head around how that would.
Right.
Add to different topics.
I think the, the population of Jericho generally lets you know what they feel. They're kind of authentic in that part of their lives.
Right.
Um, not always the betterment, but in that respect, I mean, we are, we like to think of ourselves as authentic in who we are. But yeah.
Yeah.
Resilient too. We all like to think we can bounce back.
Yeah.
We wanna create a town that is resilient, needs capabilities.
I think he was thinking a lot of that natural resources stuff would come under resilient, that his sense of resilience was around risk mitigation, climate change, sustainability, physical evolution, um, authentic. I think he was kind of thinking around transparency and honest communications, transparent government, um, social uh, interactions that are facilitated by the built environment. So having green spaces and park benches and things that allow the community to share their authentic selves. I don't know, I'm putting, sort of putting words in his mouth, but from the, from the description. So he sent us a more, slightly more detailed outline that I think you guys all have. I only extracted the big words for this display. Um, so he does give a little bit more explanation about it, but let's maybe continue down to the next section where he then.
Before we go, can I just, I do I, I wanna echo that what Wendy put up there with ecosystems should be part of this. We, we are both a micro and a macro ecosystem in Jericho. And that kind of suggests that everything fits together as a puzzle. We need to make sure all of the pieces are properly represented. So I would prefer to see something about that as one of our values.
Okay. So then if the, so the values are sort of like, here's what, here's what's important, here's what's makes, makes us tick as a community. Then his next section was therefore, what are you wanting to do in your community and how are you gonna get it done? So what are your goals and what are your strategies? And unlike the current town plan, which is hundreds of pages of miscellaneous stuff, I think he's really gonna try to target specific things. And so these are the themes that he's. And so these are the themes that he's toying with, so um. Leveraging the future with the past, a real focus on the villages and mixed use and priority areas for development. The working in natural landscapes that we were just mentioning. Making connections across people and places, which is kind of like that infrastructure, community facilities conversation. And then actual physical infrastructure. So those are the five themes that he's developing. And the reason I wanted to bring it to the planning commission now is because it's May second. And his first draft is due to us by the end of June, early July timeframe. And I wanted to give him feedback on his structure well in advance. Because if we really didn't like it, or if we really had big suggestions, I wanted to get it to him with enough time to work it into his draft.
So, for example, if you were to think. As I do, that one of the main goals for the next town plan would be affordable housing. Where would that, how does that fall into this, into these two pages here? Because I don't, I don't see it.
Um, I would think that it would mostly be there and number two are villages. And in the.
But that presumes that. The housing is going to be in the villages. I guess I'm I'm just saying that that's been a primary focus. Of pretty much of our recent discussion, and I feel like it because it has, I feel like that and natural resources. Are two and infrastructure are the three things that we've spent ninety percent of our time. Thinking about and talking about, and I feel like given that they may want to be more. Literally visible.
Okay, I concur.
They kind of just says basically two, three and four should be the primary themes. I look at five as, I mean.
But I I I I keep hearing Chuck and and I I while I agree that. Our focus on housing development should be in the villages. I also think it's it's it is a townwide need. And it doesn't necessarily have to be in the villages. Like I think, for example, all of low density residential should be quarter acre zoning. So that's not in the villages per se.
Right, and if if half the houses added an ADU, that could be anywhere.
Right, so I don't think that in my mind, the housing problem or need is not just a village issue. It's a town issue. So I think it's a, in my mind, it doesn't really fall under that.
Yeah, for me, I thought it was a little too academic. And not brass tacks enough, like why are we beating around the bush? Why I, you know, I, why don't we be less lofty and more.
Direct.
It's pretty simple. It's housing, it's natural resources, it's infrastructure and it's connectivity. Like, those are the things, those are what we always talk about, is what everybody always says to us.
And I think we just have to have the faith that we can reach those goals. Without making them at the expense of the history of place.
Mm hmm.
Or without making that the expense of one of the other goals.
Exactly.
Mm hmm.
The, you know, again, affordable housing is an important piece. It's obviously something important to me. I'm on the committee about that. But do we really want to have quarter acre zoning up and down Plains Road? Is that an appropriate place for it?
Well, we can discuss that later.
On our streets with quarter acre zoning, that's, we 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 need to be. We need to be looking not at the problem of today, because we can't solve it. You could put the entire town on quarter acre zoning tomorrow morning. And it still wouldn't do a darn thing to solve affordable housing. It could do something thirty years from now and turn Jericho into something that looks like. I don't know, Montgomery County, Maryland. Which is my perception of something that's about as close to a place where it's very hot all the time and people with pitchforks come around after you. I grew up there.
Well, uh, we'll be discussing this.
Maybe we need to be moving forward twenty years from now. And 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 so when we talk about housing, which is a current need, something needs to be done within the next three to five years.
Which is not going to be solved in the next three to five.
So we need to be thinking of what's twenty years from now, what would that solution look like?
Exactly.
And where does it go?
But do you, can you see that we would help ourselves having that twenty year view? And not just salt trying to solve yesterday's problem if housing were more prominently called out. Rather than we're we're sitting here trying to decipher these words and sort of, well, it means this and it means that. And it's like, is it blue or is it green? Like, let's just be more explicit.
Yes.
And then we can deliberate about.
And we know where it goes, but.
Sure, right. I think this has a runs the risk of. Like our current town plan being a lot of um sort of milky toast. Feel good language that doesn't really move the ball down.
Yes, yeah, right.
But this also is guiding us in a sense towards what will. The social, political, environmental character of Jericho be like in twenty years? Yes, we want housing. Absolutely, we want more housing. We need more housing. But we are doing it as a balance. So maybe if there's something in here that says it's all of these things balanced. Against each other.
Mm hmm.
And I'm not coming up with right words right now, but it's just.
Well, I think that's where the.
I hear an over weighting on housing, 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 housing. And ten years ago, twenty years ago, it was natural resources, protected woods, protected trees, protected farms.
Right.
The pendulum.
The pendulum slips.
But I also feel like we have a tool, we have the the natural resources overlay. To function, to protect those spaces and those things. And so if we work with, if we navigate within that framework that already exists. We don't, like, ten years ago, this could have said, we need to build a natural resources overlay. We built that, check. Don't change it. Operate within that framework. Next, we need to build infrastructure and housing.
That's sort of the current chapter.
That's the current chapter. It doesn't mean burn the rest down. We don't necessarily want to burn the zoning down, even if we did break a whole bunch of quarter acre zoning into developable space. We might also write curb cuts this far apart or whatever, so it's not just houses lining this lining Plains Road, right? Like, there's ways to write it that accomplish both things.
I think this is a really good illustration of why he's suggesting we need values. And themes, because the values help you make those trade offs.
Those are the things you're not going to compromise, and I agree that, but but I also agree with you. This is not helpful to me. This is not directive to me in any way. This is like, yay, we love ourselves. We're a great community. We want, everyone wants to live here. Yes, clearly they do.
Right.
No, we can't get people to leave.
Okay, so here's, so we'll share the minutes of this discussion, which we know Nancy does an awesome job of recording. With David, and then I also encourage everybody to sit with his more detailed outline. And be really, really honest and really, really forthcoming and whether or not, and I. He's hap, he wants to receive that input, and I think he thought it would be easier for him if he heard it individually. So either call him or email him or, you know, whatever format works for you. Because we we can't, we, well, this is a good group discussion now, but it it needs more than this. So whatever you can do in this, in the next couple of weeks as he's, but knowing that he's drafting or will. He had, hasn't really started, so he's starting soon. So the window of opportunity is really the next like two to four weeks, I'd say, to really help direct him into what. Format we want him to take.
I would say the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Because he he is going to start writing this like.
Yeah.
I would say in the next week, probably shortly after the community forum.
Yeah, I think that that's because we only have two more sessions left.
Yeah.
Okay, so that brings us to the next comment, the next topic. So is everybody okay closing this? Is that good enough for now?
No, I like that. Get it done.
Right. Oh, then the last part of the plan will be organized into short, medium and long term steps. He's going out fifteen years. The plan gets updated every eight, so more of the focus will be on short and medium term. And then the plan will start getting updated again in seven years.
And I think that we should have built into this some regular. Uh, period of uh checkup, check in. So that every year, every six months or every two, whatever it is, you'll say, okay, this was our one to three year goals. Where are we at?
Yep.
Because I feel like that hasn't happened.
I've never seen it.
No.
Well, we can build that into our PC meeting schedule now that Susan and I have a document where we plan it out.
But let's, I think we should put it into the plan.
So.
This, yeah.
Yeah.
Or the town budget, right? Like, we all need to see measurable things. If we say we're going to do something within three years.
We need to hold ourselves accountable.
We need to hold ourselves accountable, and if it says we're going to uh finish the wastewater.
Usability study.
Study by a certain date. We need to look at it and say, didn't do it, and then.
Forgetting about it and.
Yes, or do a study and then not activate anything with the results, which we are sort of.
Well, so in that vein, uh Sarah. Uh, SJ had previously has organized one joint meeting where it was the PC, the affordable housing. And Jericho Community Development Corp and the Select Board, I think.
Just three.
Those three, so um now, you know, SJ said, let's rotate that. So now it's our turn to host that meeting, so we're starting to work on a date for that this summer. So because the goal was to have at least two or three of those joint meetings a year.
Hmm.
I like getting it done and having the 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 short term, medium term, long term uh targets with date specific.
Yep.
Uh, but that requires us going back to the themes and the values of what specifically. Are we saying needs to be done in three years? Within three years, is it? Yes or no answer to do we have infrastructure in Jericho? And if so, are we starting planning for what, you know, what?
Maybe one of our values needs to be accountability.
Hey man.
Ah, yes.
Right, like, there's been too much. Go along, get along.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Or just forget about it and go away.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and even if the medium term goal is that within four years, we should be building. Some wastewater infrastructure in some capacity, we should have broken ground. That's okay, that's an okay goal. It doesn't have to specifically be, right, we need to have built this specific thing. For this many people, just we have to have started something.
I mean, we we are, we don't need a wastewater survey to know.
That's what Chris gives me, yes. So why don't we just?
Build it at the high school, build it as big as you can make it. I mean, the middle school, and it'll be used.
Exactly.
Like, I, you know, like, I feel like.
My my point is, we should then say that our short term goal is within three years. We have the location and the funding in place to get it rolling. We may not be able to break ground, but within three years, we're almost.
Formalized the plan.
Okay, so.
Bond or whatever.
We will have fun, an opportunity to work on the actual content, so we have to move on.
No.
Okay, so the next task is to discuss the next question of the month. So we took a little break from question of the month because we had a break. And um based on David's schedule, the next topic. For the work session, which is planned for. I think June sixth is infrastructure and community facilities. And so what I'd like to do tonight is just talk about some ideas around that question. And then Linda and I and whomever else wants to can work on some actual questions. And then we have to finalize the questions at our next planning commission meeting so that we can. Publish it within a day or two and give people enough time to answer it, so we have the data in time for the session. Got it? Okay, so um. Infrastructure and community facilities. So the first thing to start with is that David has suggested. That this is a pretty broad topic. It's not only water, wastewater and sewer. Community infrastructure is also the physical.
And like.
Right, the physical stuff, but also the so, some of the social stuff, like community interactivity. Yep, um.
Baseball.
Yep, so. This is kind of starting cold, but um. I, so I did draft a question.
Oh, you did?
I did, but no, I didn't do it till later in the day, so it's in the Google. Doc, so I don't know if we can actually bring it up. So we don't need the document.
I think Sabina could share. It'd be easier for her because I'm gonna have to.
Okay, Sabina, can you share? I sent you a link to it, but I can just explain it. We don't have to actually look at it because maybe that's distracting.
Okay, just tell me what you want me to do.
Sometimes it helps.
Would you rather look at it? Okay, we'll look at it.
Okay.
Just throwing it out there to to get the juices flowing, not married to the question. So Sabina, are you able to share it on your screen?
I'm looking for it. Um, I thought I, oh, here it is, okay.
If it comes on, I'm sure we'd see her brow.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Sabina. Thank you for being willing to do it on the fly.
No problem. One moment. Let me make it bigger.
Please.
You guys can't read them?
No, wait, that went away.
Number of years ago, I could have.
All right, hang on.
There's a little dropdown right on the top left, next to normal. Oh, there you go.
Okay, is that big enough?
Yeah, so question about community facilities, also known as infrastructure. Where you answer the questions, here's a list of stuff. Typically defined as community facilities and infrastructure. And this list is mostly David's list with a little bit of added on stuff from me. And those are all the items and we can. We don't have to agree on those right this second. We're just going to look at this question. Okay, so then the next paragraph says. We already have some infrastructure. We have some roads, we have some trails, we have a library, we have a couple of parks. The town plan is going to direct the next phase, the next chapter we were just talking about of infrastructure. Water and wastewater are especially important for compact and affordable housing development and for commercial uses. In and near the core village triangle. So that's sort of the setup. It's probably too long, could definitely, way too long.
Way too suggestive too.
Okay.
That says if you don't want this, you're you're really ignoring all the priorities.
That's true, so I should maybe take that out. Okay, so then here's the three questions. What are your priorities? List up to five. Where is that important? And would you support using town money and resources? To help deliver this priority? And then I'm saying, you don't have to pick from the list. The list is just ideas to tell, but. Your idea should fit within that category of stuff like that basic idea, and then if you continue down. Oh, I was expecting, there's one more page, Sabina. Yeah, that actually, this is what the que, that the questions would basically be for each priority. You get up to five, where would it be? And yes or no, you're willing to like help pay for it and help get it done.
I feel like part of this infrastructure. Uh, discussion with the town should be making sure that people understand that a lot of people who already live here. And already have. making sure that people understand that a lot of people who already live here and already have onsite sewer, when that system fails, they will be in a lot of trouble.
Yes.
So that a lot of people might not be thinking that, oh, my, there's a clock ticking on my septic. And when that fails, I will not be able to do a new septic and I'm gonna be in trouble.
Yeah.
So I think somehow that would be important to.
Well, the village wastewater study.
Do you want that? But do we not steer people towards saying wastewater?
Yeah, and also.
I believe is super important, but I don't want to steer people.
The village wastewater study, they did a survey and they got six hundred responses or something crazy like that, right? Three hundred?
There were so, there was more than expected. I don't have the numbers.
Okay, a lot of people. And that is like a four page questionnaire about your septic system, how old it is, what's the failure plan, what's your plan B? So there's already like a really detailed awareness of all three village sewers. I completely disagree.
Different understanding. If you're talking to Sarah, hey, do you support town spending money on uh, new municipal wastewater treatment facility at the middle school? Like that might not relate to Sarah in any way whatsoever.
Or I think it doesn't.
Or you think it does.
Because I don't have any understanding of how the connection would physically be built between this village center and that village center.
Or you might not know that your, your system is going to fail.
Correct. I don't think the general public understands that a standard, the in-ground wastewater system has a lifespan of fifty to seventy years if used correctly, cleaned and maintained correctly. And I don't think the general public, because all the home, all the home buyers I talked to do not have an understanding that to replace that system is thirty to sixty thousand dollars when it fails. And that they may be inheriting a system that is, will fail within ten years.
If you have the land to do a new one.
If you have a land to do a new one.
From their well and your neighbor's well and.
Right, but, right, no, so fifty to, so it could be, yeah, thirty to seventy thousand dollars. An alternative wastewater above ground system could be seventy thousand dollars for your single family three bedroom home. I don't think that number blows people's minds. How am I supposed to buy a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and expect to reinvest twenty percent of the value of my home in replacing the wastewater system when I put down three percent? And had to call my rich uncle to get the cover, to cover the closing costs because I couldn't pay the transfer tax of one and a half percent. Right? Like this math does not enter people's minds. We blissfully go through thinking that won't happen to me.
Hmm.
And then people have to take out home equity lines of credit and they can't go on vacation for ten years. And like they, they, until it happens to you or your neighbor and they tell you their sob story or whatever, I don't think people really understand how much it costs. So when that survey went out, I don't think ninety percent of the people answering those questions were like, oh yeah, I'll just build another one if mine failed. Yeah, just like what? That's not gonna happen to me. I got mine pumped five years ago. It's fine. Or I lived here for twelve years. I don't even know what's back there.
And a lot of these.
I think that was a lot of the answers that people didn't know.
And a lot of these dense, small neighborhoods are about the same age.
Yes, and that's what I was gonna say, that housing boom that happened on that thing with the mine ground. We are about to reach that fifty year period. Justin Willis is about to get really good if he doesn't retire. Okay, so.
It's worth noting on that though, that a lot of those that were built in that timeframe. I, my development's one of them, have community septic. And I don't know how many of them have the foresight that our homeowners association did, have a safety fund to cover work. But.
So our goal with question of the month is to raise awareness about the project and get a general pulse about how people feel about a topic. And this is a pretty, David's set it up as a pretty broad topic. So the, the question is, what should our question or questions be? So that we can get another word cloud or get another bit of data that will help inform us about you know, whether are, like, we definitely seem that there's consensus among us that it's time for the town to step up and start investing in infrastructure. But the town plan ultimately has to set that up as a strategy that has support from the entire community. So how do we make sure the community is becoming aware that that's seems to be the wisdom of the, of the the day? And, and, but also thinking about all these other facilities like trails and healthcare and childcare and like, maybe he's setting it up as, maybe it's too broad. I mean, maybe it should be, you know, what?
It's very broad.
What does infrastructure mean to you? Do you care about infrastructure? Do you wake up at three o'clock in the morning thinking about infrastructure? You know, I don't know what the question should be.
How far, Eric?
That, that's fine. Just to right there.
Okay. I think these questions are really good.
The questions are good. I like the question.
I wonder if there should be more questions specific to the topics of high import, higher importance that we've are, you know, the, the common suspects. Like if we have a supplemental question that just speaks to wastewater, that would say something like this is a current priority that the town is pursuing. I don't have the language for the question yet, but I'm just suggesting that we have this broad question because I think it would be helpful to understand what people think out of that whole laundry list, what their top five are and whether they're willing to pay for it. But then also maybe focusing narrowing the question and supplemental question asking specifically about topics like wastewater that we're already you know, making progress on. And I think Sarah, you had some great comments about communicating the, the somewhat dire need for village wastewater infrastructure.
Yeah.
And I think that that is going to be an essential part of the outreach that we need to do throughout this wastewater feasibility study. And I would love your help with wordsmithing some of the content for the website because you have a really great perspective from dealing with a lot of homeowners and home buyers on that. Um, so I hear what you're saying about it, like, it's like a really big priority, but I don't know how much time and space we wanna put into this question. Because I think like the longer the questions get, the less likely people are to agree, read, read through all the content and answer them.
And, and, and is this too, is it too much to ask people to say, maybe we should just say, what are your priorities? List, list up to five and not ask them about where and not ask them about support for money and resources?
I would like to see support for money and I'd like to know where my you know, the infrastructure specifically around wastewater and water as well, because they should be treated the same is a question of how many people are gonna be willing to pay for a wastewater system that does not include their own septic.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Everyone who doesn't want to pay more taxes because the schools are losing kids and the tax rate is gonna go up.
We can argue against that, that with proper wastewater treatment, we can increase the population. And with that, granted, we don't, families don't have five kids anymore. They have one or two. But we still would increase the school, uh, school population. And, and by the way, the MMU district includes several other towns. We're not the only one responsible there.
Yep.
I, I would.
The only other thing, my, now looking at it, the priorities for infrastructure is a little bit of an overlap with what the select board asked in the ARPA survey. So, um, I, because I was like, oh, well, maybe we should, you know, give them that list, can maybe streamline the list and ask them to rank it. And I was like, oh, we just did that a year ago.
A lot of the ARPA had questions like, let's build a childcare center.
Right.
Things that are ongoing costs of it or.
Yeah, I do feel like that survey asked these questions in a different way. Right.
But I don't think it got useful answers.
So what would be useful for us to learn at this phase of our work on the town plan regarding infrastructure?
I still believe we need to focus on water and sewer for the infrastructure because that allows.
I agree.
When we look twenty years out, we're going to have to, we're, we're gonna need water and sewer.
If we don't do water and sewer, we're not doing anything else.
We're not doing affordable housing.
We're not doing anything. We're main painting the status quo.
Or, or watching, watching Jericho Center die off frankly, because if they don't have water, they can burn down, literally. And they won't have any drinking water. And those houses won't be habitable and they, it, it will just become a, a ghost town. So are you guys saying?
Because we can't live in density, up and down Skunk Column.
That community center and that cultural center and that historical center. Okay, so are you saying regardless of the broad definition that David's working with, it doesn't matter for this question of the month, we would like to focus on water and wastewater?
So.
Okay, so that's, that's, that would change it. And so then we wouldn't ask question number one about priorities. What would we want to know from people about water and wastewater?
Well, we, we could still keep the first one, would be aside from water and sewer. What are your other infrastructure priorities? Is it bike paths? Is it?
Well, you could maybe include that, but not first. Maybe, maybe last. So you maintain the focus on the high order things.
And then instead of where and what parts of town, so you know, really the end question is, would you support using town money and resources? Help deliver this priority to your neighborhood, the town centers, the entire town.
Well, so maybe the question then is really instead of where you were pointing out that that the paragraph above kind of leads the witness, maybe that, that's okay, that the paragraph above says maybe the whole question is town plan will direct the next phase of infrastructure. And by the way, infrastructure is really important for affordable housing. Maybe it's most cost effective if it happens in these areas. And then the question is, would you support using tax money and resources to help deliver this infrastructure? You know, over the next ten years?
But add another question to that.
What else?
Would you support it if it extended to your house?
Why? As if they said no, you mean, like to the first question?
If they live up in the foothills. And sorry, you're not in the district. I'm not gonna vote for it. What if you were included? Would you pay for it?
But isn't that? Um.
What else isn't in the, in the tribe?
I mean, I'd like to be six foot tall and blonde, but it's never gonna happen. Like, we're, we're, are we really gonna look at putting sewer lines out on Nashville Road?
Silly Hill Road. I mean, we're not.
Maybe.
Doesn't, doesn't that kind of get into the argument of like, well, I don't have kids in the school system. Why should I pay school taxes? I mean, isn't that?
Right. So I'm not, I'm not clear about the distinction you're trying to get at, that you're asking people about, like if they.
Well, to Sabina's point, it's, yeah, you actually will have kids in the school system because the septic's been large, gonna run right by your house.
But it really depends on where they live, Linda.
So the way that Westford has approached this issue, because they are focused on a very small center of their community
Yes.
for the infrastructure is explaining that the wastewater infrastructure will support all the municipal facilities. And it will help support businesses and commercials. So like all the things that make a town vibrant, not just, yeah. Not just.
The people who live here.
Right, not just the people who live here. It's a community asset. It supports the vibrancy of the community.
Have they been successful at getting the people who live out by Cobb's Corner? Or off of, um, Chayton Road to say, yeah, we're, we're willing to pay for this.
I mean, my parents are willing to pay.
Some of them, yeah. I mean, it's, I'm not saying.
In progress.
Yeah, it's a work in progress. They're not, they're not done with the, you know, they haven't built anything yet. But if you go to their website, they have a really great website, um, about their wastewater project. And that's, um, the way they're speaking to those folks who would say like, why should I pay for this? Because I don't live in that area. And I think that is a valid, um.
And I don't think it's a different question than saying, do you want affordable housing? I mean, if you want affordable housing, you gotta have to, you're gonna have to pay for the infrastructure.
Right.
If you don't want affordable housing, it's because you already set, you have your house and you don't care about anybody else.
Right. All right. I think we have enough direction for now. We're gonna narrow the question. Really good feedback. We'll work on it more. We'll send something out before our next meeting. And at our next meeting, we have to like approve the question so that we can publish it. Okay? Okay. The last item for this topic is to look at the schedule for the next town plan project events. Just to make sure that we're so focused on the forum, that's right in front of us, but there's but also then starting to look down for a little bit further down the road. Um. So that is right here. Okay, so May third is the forum. At our meeting on May sixteenth, we're going to debrief from the community forum. So I would encourage all of us like to write down as much as you possibly can, as soon as you can after the forum, so you don't forget what you've heard. Um, June sixth will be the work session with David on infrastructure and facilities. That's, so we need the question of the month in advance of that meeting. So we'll also be finalizing that on May sixteenth. June eighth, S J's organized the town to be at the farmer's market pretty much all summer. And she gave each of us time to sign up. And I signed us up for one in June because I wanted to get before the draft is done. And then one in August, when the draft is pretty much like in really good shape. So June eighth will be the table at the farmer's market. And I think we already have a couple of people who said they could be there for that. June twentieth will be the work session on local economy. July fourth is a holiday, so we won't have a meeting. And then July eighteenth, at our meeting, at our P C meeting, we will review David's first draft. So he needs to, and he knows this. He will be sending it to us at least a week prior so that we have time to read it and digest it. And I, um, would really like that to be like a very rigorous review of his, of his draft. Um, then it'll be work, work, work. And then we'll have another table at the farmer's market. So the schedule then is less defined. But just so everybody sees that this is the work that we have coming up. Okay, on board? Are we missing anything? Is it out of order? Everybody signed up for it?
Yay.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. So we can close the topic, number five of the, the town plan. Do we have number six, do we have any public comment related to the conversation we just had? Do we have any public?
We don't have any public.
Okay. Uh.
Um, let's see, let's.
Is that true?
Uh.
Sure looks like it.
Yes, okay. Seven, planners report, Linda, what, what information do you have to share with us?
Well, I didn't get the chance at the last meeting to report on the capital planning forum that John and I attended, um, back in mid-April. So I did luckily write down some notes shortly after I got back from that so that I didn't have to remember everything. Um, it was a great meeting. It was hosted by the Vermont Bond Bank. Um, there were a lot of representatives there from municipalities throughout the state. Um, and they had some great speakers there. And the first speaker, um, was actually from Massachusetts. And I learned that the state of Massachusetts has an entire bureau of their state government that is dedicated to assisting municipalities with their financial management, which I thought was really cool. Um, and I, I don't know if any of you already knew that, but, um, so their state has like a whole bureau of support staff that provide technical assistance to municipalities with financial planning. Um, so that was really interesting. The presenter talked about some of the, a lot of the resources that are available online. So it's great too, that that information is all out there that we can access and kind of go through at our own pace to kind of just pull from that. So we don't have to start from scratch. Um, and the, some of the things that the speaker encouraged were looking at, um, having a financial policy for the town that guides decision-making. And I asked whether, when I got back, I asked whether the town had any specific. And I asked whether, when I got back, I asked whether the town had any specific like policy that they had adopted to help them, help guide them when decisions about spending money came up and it didn't sound like that was the case. So I thought that might be a good starting point for a conversation.
Be.
So it would be like, well, I'll have to go to this website to pull out some examples, but it was, it was basically like a policy, not just like a procurement policy, which says something like, oh, we're gonna get three bids from different vendors or something, but it would be almost like a way that they, like a decision tree about like how they prioritize where they want to make investments and having a policy so that it's transparent and so that everyone knows what what information the select board is using when they're making financial decisions. So I thought that was, that would be something great to, to have.
Is it aligned with the town plan? Is it outside of budget?
Yes.
Could it be delayed until next year? Who has to approve it?
Exactly, yeah, so that type of thing. So I thought that would be a really nice thing to see happen here. Um, I think, uh, he also talked about how to build a capital budget, which was really helpful, um, and he described, uh, the community vision. Should be like the town plan as, as a painting and that the capital plan is the paint and the brushes that bring it to life. And so I thought that was a really good way to kind of think about it, where you have this visual image in your head and in order to like make it happen, you need to have the money or the paint and the brushes in this case, um. So he was a great speaker and then they had a panel, uh, different representatives from a town, a city and regional planning that were talking just about different experiences and challenges with having a capital plan, um. And some of the, some of the things they said that it can be helpful for the public and the staff to understand like what's coming and when. So when you have a capital plan, it outweighs like in this year, we're gonna get a new fire truck and this year, we're gonna get a town garage. And so then everybody knows kind of like when things are coming and it's, it's very clear and it's already like publicized ahead of time. Um, and, and they also reiterated that like it can be, uh, help minimize disruptions to achieving the vision or the goals of the town plan. If there's like select board turnover or staff turnover, so like, it's not just like one person who was trying to, you know, push through whatever their priorities were. It's like, okay, we already have this. We already have this capital plan and just because so and so isn't on the board anymore, or whoever like isn't on staff, like we're still following the capital plan because this, these are the town goals from town priorities. They talked about having flexibility, um. Their suggestion was to review progress annually, which is something that, you know, came up tonight in our conversation, so it was good to kind of reinforce that. Um, they suggested having a fifteen minute check in at select board meetings, um. They said once a month, but maybe, you know, what, maybe two months or three months or something quarterly, just to kind of like make sure that it's being, uh, that's not being forgotten about for accountability, just like, okay, let's just do a quick check in. And I talked to John about whether he could like, like find a way to get that into, um, future agendas. And he thought that that was something reasonable. And then, let's see, there was another presentation about was a panel with folks from different, um, state agencies. There was someone from V-Trans, someone from emergency management. Uh, someone from the national resources who is focused on climate change and then, um, someone from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and um, one of the, one of the big take home messages that I got from that session that, that I thought you guys, this would resonate with you is that, um, this actually came from the climate change person and they said that Vermont really needs to go through a cultural shift in how we think about living here. We can't meet all of our climate change goals and our affordable housing goals by all continuing to live on isolated ten acre compounds that are strewn throughout the rural countryside. Um, and that we need, you know, the need is for denser, denser centralized mixed use areas where, where the services and public transit are all concentrated. So I hadn't ever thought about it in that way of like, like it needs to be a really a a cultural shift, a mindset shift in that, you know, there's a lot of people that have lived here for a long time that sort of, you know, the expectation is that we'll all get to have our, our homesteads that are sprawling, you know, all this land and stuff and, and really to meet, to meet a lot of the goals that this group talks about and that they're talking about the state and national level, like it needs to be. It needs to, the, the way people live just needs to, to look different. Um. And the other key takeaway I would say overall was that it was just really positive and encouraging and it was really great to meet some of the people that were there and it really made me feel, and John feel like it did seem like all the state and regional agent, agencies are working together and are, are engaged in supporting municipalities with achieving their goals. So it was like, well, what are you, what are you guys working on in your town? Okay, well, we have people here that you can talk to about that. And so that felt really good, like we felt really, like there was good support out there. So that was great. So, yeah, those are my key takeaways. It was a really good session.
That's good, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Another item I want to just report on is that on May eighteenth, which is select board, at the select board meeting, not this Thursday, but two weeks from Thursday. Um, the engineers from Stan Tech are going to be doing a presentation on the alternatives to, for the Riverside to Jericho Quarters path. So that's the Route fifteen option versus the old railroad bed option.
Is it unrepeatable? We did a couple of weeks back.
No, it's the next step. So what we did the first time was sort of a, they call that the local concerns meeting, where you just kind of hear general thoughts and comments from the public about the, the concepts. And this will be where they present, um, some more formalized plans of the different options. And are looking to engage the public in getting feedback on like very much, much more explicit, explicit and detailed plans.
And that's on the eighteenth of this month?
Eighteenth of this month, it'll be like the first hour or so of the select board meeting. And so the idea, the outcome of that meeting.
We're all sitting too still.
Yeah, it's motion.
Uh. We're rocking over there.
Sorry, our lights, there we are.
Do those meetings start at seven also?
So, actually, they started at seven. They started at six thirty.
Band concert that night, you guys, come on.
Is it band or is it chorus?
There's a. Oh, fifth and sixth grade band and chorus. I know, buddy, I know.
So are they hoping to have a big public turnout at that May eighteenth meeting? Or that's just sort of the preview to the select board and then there's gonna be some follow up to get public input?
No, we would have to have, it is, it's a select board, it's at the select board meeting. And so ideally, what we would want to happen, it may not happen at this meeting, but, um, would be that the select board endorse one of the two alternatives to advance to engineering and design, so that we could seek money to further the work on the project. They don't have to endorse it. One of the options at that meeting, but ideally, you know, we want to get them there at some point in the near future.
Mm-hmm.
If they do endorse one of those options at that meeting, there is a grant opportunity through the V-Trans Bike and Pedestrian Program that is available right now that we could apply for funding to do the design and construction of the project that is due on June ninth. So if we can get a endorsement of one of the alternatives within the next month or so, um, we might be able to put in an application to get funding to further.
So you said it was May eighteen?
Eighteen, yeah.
Which is about the next month, that's the next two weeks.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, but they would, so yeah, I guess they would need by, by a month from, a month from now, we'd need to have a decision from them about furthering one of the options.
May I make a suggestion that we on the planning commission put forward a resolution to the select board that they pick and support? One of those two? And much as I would love to have it by the old rail trail, it sounds like that one's just gonna be too expensive to maintain.
Uh, let's pay, let's wait and see what.
Yeah, we don't know yet. That's, that's something that they should be addressing at this, at this meeting on May eighteenth, talking about potential costs, just conceptual costs. They won't be, you know, obviously like.
Well, as, as planning commission, and I, I believe it is a good idea for us to attend that meeting and then to come down in favor and say, we on the planning commission say, this is the one you should pick. That way they, push comes to shove, they can point to us. But we can also say, this is part of our infrastructure plan, this is what we are told the town wants.
Mm-hmm.
And kind of force them to take an action. As opposed to kicking the can down the road for another.
Well, so if there's, we'd have to have a quorum, we'd have to warrant it as a meeting and we'd have to discuss our opinion at the meeting on the eighteenth to have an opinion on the eighteenth. I don't, I don't.
No, we do it the week after.
No, we could do it at one of our meetings.
Oh, I thought you were saying they want to make a decision on the eighteenth.
They could.
Right.
They could. Question, are they gonna have the information before their meeting? So that they can review it or are they gonna be hearing it for the first time on the, on the eighteenth? The select. Or ahead of time, but I, I don't know.
Right, so.
I mean, just saying if they're hearing it for the first time, that's kind of a big ask, I guess, maybe to, to have them come down with a decision without. Yeah.
So what we could see though, is if the material is available, we could put on our agenda for May sixteenth. So that we can just at least, is it obvious to us? Do we have an opinion? Do we, do we think both are great? Whatever they want to do is fine. And then one of us can deliver that message at that meeting on the eighteenth. Like we support these options or we support, we like, kind of like option A for these reasons. And if we don't get there, we don't get there, but maybe we would.
I, I would like us to draw a line in the sand that says, we pick this one. And if we have to wait until after that meeting, cause to Sabina's point and your point, they can't make a decision without warning that we're gonna be voting on this. If I'm not mistaken, because that would be.
Well, it'll be an agenda item.
But, and it would have to be, we're going to vote on which of these we're gonna pick. Cause you have to have a public hearing beforehand, don't you? Am I wrong?
Not to endorse an alternative, not necessarily.
Yeah, it'll be on their agenda to like review the, we hear the consultants report and potentially like select an alternative.
Mm-hmm.
That's just like that would be their regular.
But the funding source is a whole different discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so if we don't get to the point of having a preferred alternative before June ninth, I don't want to leave the impression that we then could never get funding for the project. Ever, like it could always, we could always, if, if we have a preferred alternative, we can seek additional grant opportunities.
It's a great way to light a fire.
It is, right.
It would continue the momentum.
Right, right. Right, but so we'll see what they say. All right, but we'll, so maybe we'll have a little placeholder for it for on our meeting on the sixteenth, if we have materials ahead of time.
Material, um, from the consultant ahead of time.
Okay.
I, I, if we can get the material beforehand, in my opinion, it would be very beneficial for the planning commission to weigh in and say, this is what we think from the planning commission perspective.
Mm-hmm.
It fits with town plans, it fits with growth plans.
Well, yeah, because we were the ones who sort of initiated, re-initiated the project in the first place.
Yeah, yeah. We could also, if, yeah, we could also talk about it on the sixth and then I guess the next select board meeting would be the eighth of June. And then I'd have to.
You just have to be ready to go, yeah.
Put in an application, but.
Well, you could be ready.
Ahead of time.
Yeah.
I could, I could have a draft ready to go.
Right, and if you don't use it for that grant application.
It'll be, it's the next one.
Right, yeah, I will plan to do that, to have an application sort of.
Yeah, got a lot of free time. Okay, so either the, either May sixteenth or June sixth, we'll take a look at it and I, I agree with you. I, I would like us, if it's obvious and we feel good about a choice. We'd have to have good criteria and, you know, good thoughts, not like I like this one and I like that one. Um, anything else, Linda?
No, those were the only things that I.
Those are exciting.
Yeah, they're really exciting. Yeah, so I'm hoping that when the capital planning happens this fall,
Mm-hmm.
that we are much more involved and that we're there with the town plan draft going, we're ready, like why wait a whole nother year to get some of these things in this plan? Like let's get started now.
They'll be budgeting for the new town manager.
Exactly.
And, and setting aside money for wastewater treatment, further
Right.
planning and development.
Right, we'll have wastewater study done. Okay, plans report is done, so now we're moving on to number eight. Any reports on any events? So any updates on liaisons or anything recently that anybody wants to share?
I have something. Um, so the Conservation Commission is recently being awarded two grants. Um, one is for, um, it's a, it's a, I'm reading it, a dam removal block grant. So we're working on getting the Derelict Dam out of the town forest area. And so we got a grant to, um, to start with that and Karina Daly is gonna be going before the select board, um, this week to finalize. They, they have to approve the, you know, like, um, getting, accepting the money, so she's gonna go and, and hopefully they will say, sure. And then, um, we also got a grant for, um, some money to help us with some of our planting projects from the, um, Association of Vermont Conservation Commissions. So that's very nice news.
That's.
And also, I started the walking college this week. And so I will, I will kind of be keeping you up to date on my progress with that, but that's gonna be going over the next six months, so. We had our first meeting today. And that's from ARPA. Um, to basically create walk, walkability advocacy, um, in town leaders.
So Sabina's gonna become an expert.
Yeah, that's great.
Yes.
It's exciting.
Great. Thank you, Sabina. Anything else? Anybody else?
Um, Sabina, do you remember what the date was that they were gonna do that invasive species removal at Mills Riverside Park?
I do, May twentieth.
Yes, May twentieth, so.
And they.
Manual labor, you go on May twentieth at ten AM to Mills Riverside Park and help rip out invasive species of plants.
There's also an opportunity for manual labor this Saturday at, uh, Mobs.
Yes, and it's Saturday everywhere with your own green bag.
Right.
You can pick up by the door.
Would you pick up by the door?
Okay, Greenup Day.
Guaranteed.
Uh, okay, so the next meetings. Um, tomorrow night's the community forum, six thirty, we'll all be there to huddle at like five forty-five. And hit, be ready to go. Thank you, everybody for doing that. Um, then this is, I didn't include May sixteenth, so May sixteenth will be big debrief on the forum, maybe we'll talk about this, um, Stan Tech study and we're gonna finalize the infrastructure question. And then May eighteenth, we'll try to go to the select board meeting. And then, um, June sixth will be the work session, so that's the next couple in the queue right there again. Okay? Anything else that needs to be incorporated into an upcoming soon agenda?
Does the planning commission want to take a position at all on the Railroad Street acquisition and what gets used there?
Railroad Circle?
Railroad Circle.
Um.
Affordable Housing Committee wants to and should. They're gonna push for affordable housing there, obviously.
Mm-hmm. We, if we want to consider that, we should add that as an agenda item and discuss it, like what would the options be and?
Or I would personally prefer that if the Affordable Housing Committee has a resolution or that we wait for them to have a resolution of intent and that we just support them instead of inventing homes.
Specifically on Railroad Circle or the general?
Railroad.
Which has already been acquired and now is sitting.
Right. Because that's what popped into my mind is like, well, we did.
Our accountability conversations.
We did already make a recommendation to the select board on ARPA.
Mm-hmm.
It included activities like Railroad Circle, so in a way, I feel like we helped prompt them to consider that. And it's a good reminder though, that the Affordable Housing Committee, as you know, um, did the work that we asked them to do on the housing resolution. We talked about that a couple of meetings ago. It's in our queue, so it's coming back to the planning commission to basically finalize, to say, yes, we're sending this, we'd like to submit this to the select board. And that won't say, it doesn't currently say Railroad Circle, but it currently says, these are the targets. And these are some of the ways that we can achieve the target. So I kind of feel like the basis is our. And these are some of the ways that we can achieve the target. So I kind of feel like the bases are covered. So maybe let's look at the resolution and see if you still think something separate is needed. Or if that's.
I, 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 I agree with what you're saying. This is. The affordable housing committee is chartered by the select board. They can go. Direct to the select.
Yeah.
This is what we believe is best used.
Yeah, I think, and I think we've set them up well to do that, yeah.
And again, I think, I think that's collectively saying. We support that is not a bad thing. We do that for even saying, you know. This many out of that many people or a majority supports that, I think it's still possible.
Mm-hmm.
Just as sadly.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll keep it off of this. This committee and we're back on that commission.
I just want to make room for them.
This commission throwback on that committee.
I want to make, I want to hold the space for them.
Yep.
On that one.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so no need for an executive session?
Move to adjourn.
Eric, move to adjourn. Chris seconds while it's so fast. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, everybody. See you tomorrow.
And look, you guys, go ten minutes.
I know, really good, yes.
Bye, Sabina.
Bye, Sabina. You, thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Erin.
See you tomorrow, Sabina.
See you tomorrow.